Call this regular scheduled meeting of Town Council to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll deem the agenda approved. And are there announcements from members of council? Counselor Thorburn.
Yes, Your Worship. Dead Precinct Museum will be closed to the public for renovations from January the 12th to January the 20th, 2020 inclusive. Stay tuned, we'll learn more about it. The change is taking shape as we expand the flexibility and versatility of our museum space. And did you know that the transit bus stops hourly right in front of Dead Precinct Museum? That's it.
Great, thank you. Others? No? All right. Just want to commend our staff for their snow clearing efforts in the storm in the weekend. That was quite a bit of snow. It came down rather quickly. And I think we fared quite well. So staff were out quite a while dealing with it. So hats off to them for doing the job that they do. And if you think it's easy, I went out last year, maybe two years ago, and watched the plows. It's not as easy as just sitting in the plow and pushing the snow because sometimes the plows don't want to go. And they have to navigate their way through and move the snow. And they have to move it in a way that's not going to damage a car, damage a piece of property. Like, there's quite a bit of logistics to it. And so, not that I would suggest everyone goes out in a storm and watches the plows, but if you see them, it's not that easy a job. So again, thanks to our staff for that. We're a little early for delegations, but I see Donna is here. So are you okay to come and speak to council as part of your delegation?
Yes, Sam's going to speak to your board.
Okay, sure. So if you want to come to the podium? And just make sure you introduce yourself. And you've got 10 minutes to address council? And that doesn't include any questions?
Sure, sure. Hopefully it won't take me 10 minutes. Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and Town Council members. My name is Samantha Crowe Zeldridge. I've been a board member with Small World Learning Center since 2006. Both of my children had the pleasure of being involved with Small World programs over the years and have both enjoyed the forest and outdoor play. So Small World's Board of Directors, staff, children, and families invite you all to become champions of outdoor forest play for all the children and their families in our community. Our request to council is the use of the forest as a natural playground and to provide us with the first right of refusal for the small piece of land that is adjacent to our center. Small World Learning Center is a nonprofit organization, and we have been a part of the community here in Bridgewater for 40 years, for over 40 years. We provide childcare programs in a licensed, regulated childcare center that was built for children, in mind, for over 119 children weekly. Children in our center range from ages of 18 months to 12 years of age. Since 2007, the children of Small World have joyfully adopted the forest area next to our center at 352 York Street, and they've turned it into their natural playground. The children are outdoors from two to five hours approximately every day, so they spend a lot of time creating and playing in the forest. We have won several awards and are recognized by early childhood and educational professionals. And our mission has been, since 1978, Small World has existed to develop and deliver early childhood educational programs that engage mind, body, and spirit through partnerships with children, staff, families, and our community. So while this land would be for Small World Learning Center, we also encourage many others in the community to use it. We are already seeing children that are bringing their families there on the weekends to play in the forest. And we also invite the other childcare organizations in town to visit the outdoor space at our center. So we have our after-school program. They love exploring in the woods after being in school all day. And the YMCA after-school program also comes down and joins us there on occasion. I did want to share with you some quotes that we have had from parents and other forest educators that we have come in contact over the past little while. The first one is from a parent, Dr. Sarah Tennant. She is a doctor here in town. "The program at Small World Learning Center is the most impressive childcare facility I have ever seen. When I was trying to decide where I wanted to practice as a physician, having a place where my kids can camp in the woods, learn about local plants, and play with sticks is exactly what I wanted. Small World does an incredible job maintaining the forest area, and I honestly feel that if you want to send a message, that you want to recruit young families to move here, that forest space needs to remain as a part of the Small World Learning Center. I want Bridgewater to grow economically, and people who move here will need fantastic childcare." We also had an early childhood author and college instructor, Susan Stacy, say, "To say that this is a rich and important learning space would be an understatement. Outdoor learning environments and forests in particular support brain and sensory development, imagination, creativity, independence, development of physical skills, and provide strong connection to the land and environmental stewardship. These foundations will last a lifetime." Then we have another quote from Elizabeth Hicks, who is an early childhood consultant. "My work with the East Hans Outdoor Project and other forest schools within Nova Scotia recognizes and validates the work that Small World wants to achieve by developing an inspiring outdoor program and environment. Research is showing that children need and flourish when they are outdoors in nature on a regular and frequent basis over a long period of time." We also had the privilege of working with Dr. Michelle Stone, who is an assistant professor at Dalhousie University. She specializes in pediatric physical activity and health. And Dr. Brusani, a developmental psychologist and associate professor in the Department of Pediatrics and the School of Population and Public Health at the University of British Columbia. That's a lot in one word and one phrase. They said that "Our work is focused on supporting children's opportunities for unstructured, child-led, active outdoor play with its risks, which is central to children's physical, mental, social, and emotional health and well-being. Taking learning outside, particularly their vast forest space, Small World Learning Center is supporting best practice and is a leader in Nova Scotia in this work. My team and I had the good fortune of working with the executive director, Donna Stapleton, and her team at Small World in our physical literacy in the early years project. Small World was an instrumental partner in this work, standing out as a model for other childcare centers to adopt best practice in outdoor play and learning. Small World Learning Center has mentored other early childhood educators in best practice, particularly drawing from their expertise in using forest and other natural outdoor spaces for early learning, and has helped transform the outdoor play spaces of childcare centers across the province. Dr. Brusani's work has taken her to early childhood centers worldwide, including Scandinavia, which is considered the center of best practice for outdoor play in the early years. Dr. Brusani considers the practice she witnessed at Small World to be on par with the best programs she has seen." So Small World Learning Center's philosophy of learning in the outdoors and allowing children to be able to access the outdoors and play in natural spaces for the vast majority of the day sets it apart from many childcare centers in Nova Scotia, Canada, and even around the world. Their emphasis on child-directed play, exploration, and risk-taking in the outdoors aligns with the mission of Outdoor Play Canada and with our own work. So this land adjacent to Small World provides valuable affordances for our outdoor play and learning that children may not otherwise have in their daily life. Educators, families, and the wider community are highly supportive of Small World's approach in accessing this space and continuing to embed it into their practices. Small World's approach to learning in the outdoors is allowing children to develop a deep connection to the land. Consequently, we're raising future citizens who will practice environmental stewardship, and that will benefit the health and wellness of our communities in the future. Dr. Michelle Stone noted, "As members of Outdoor Play Canada, we endorse the work of Small World Learning Center and highly stress the importance of continuing to allow them the opportunity to access their forest space. In closing, we hope that you will be able to support the valuable work that we do in the forest and nature each day and grant us use of the forest and the first right of refusal for the parcel of land adjacent to the center." Thank you.
Thank you. I know this item is further down the agenda. We'll bring this up after the time for delegations. We'll then approve the minutes, and then we can do this. You guys can hang around for the whole night, but we'll move it up the agenda.
Okay, sure.
Are there any questions from members of council?
Just more for Donna, perhaps. Has Small World reviewed the lease and so on that was provided?
Yes, we did.
Okay. No issues with it?
Nope. No, we were fine with the lease that is there, yeah.
Okay.
And I think we've met all the conditions that we needed to meet as far as insurance and all these types of things. Is that all right, Donna? We have checked with our insurance company, and we've verified that we are covered for families that are using that area.
Okay, and guests that are using it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions? No? We've had this discussion as we've gone back and forth with staff.
Yeah, this has been talked about and discussed, I think, a lot. So hopefully this just further shows our commitment to the forest space.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other delegations or members of the public that wish to address council this evening on any other matter? No? All right. So if we can approve the minutes, and then we can deal with this item. You have your minutes from December 9th, regular Town Council meeting before you. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, we will deem the minutes approved. And then we will go down to the, I'm just trying to find where it is in my, 10.1. Okay, we'll go down to 10.2. Lease agreement Small World Learning Center Society, the Town of Bridgewater, you have that before you. We've heard the presentation.
Declare conflict of interest. My daughter attends Small World Learning Center.
Thank you. So we've had this discussion before. We've heard the presentation. Questions? We can put a motion on the floor? Sure.
I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater authorize the execution of the five-year lease agreement with Small World Learning Center Society for the property being paid part of PID 60023298, including the right of first refusal on the approximate 19,000 square foot portion thereof, and with the agreement to be generally in the form included in Document 18-069F.
Thank you. Can I have a second here, please? Counselor Graves, discussion. Deputy Mayor Tanner.
I'm fully in support of this, but I just noticed a potential issue in the lease, I guess, that I probably should bring out. So we should have landlord insurance, which is then an added insurance?
For us?
Yeah.
I suspect that we have not. We'll confirm it with our insurance.
But that is supposed to be then charged back to the tenant as an added insurance.
If it's an additional cost, perhaps?
Okay. So we're good on, okay, perfect. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Other questions? Any questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. There you go. Welcome back, Counselor McDonald. Thank you. Going back to the regular agenda, under planning items, 10.1, preliminary report, rezoning of 12 Kensington Court. And I see Mr. Brown is here to walk us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An application was received by staff opposing rezoning at 12 Kensington Court.
Can you just play your microphone?
Right. Sorry. The proposal is to rezone from single-unit residential R1 to two-unit residential R2 to accommodate an over and under two-unit dwelling duplex. There would be no structural changes needed to create the legal second unit. It's essentially already there. We'll have some fire separation on the ceiling of the bottom floor. However, building and development permits would be still required for the change of use and any significant renovations to the interior of either unit. Parking can be accommodated for the two units with the existing driveway. The parking requirement would be for two spaces. So the subdivision known as Mayfair Heights consists mostly of R1 zoning. There's currently R2 zoning on the six cul-de-sac bulbs, so the top properties at the end of those cul-de-sacs are R2. Number 12 Kensington Court, and you see on the screen, the circle is abutting some of that two-unit residential zoning. Land uses in Mayfair Drive and Mayfair Heights are predominantly single-unit dwellings. Mayfair Drive has, and the six cul-de-sacs that make up Mayfair Heights, is designated low-density residential on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. The low-density residential designation includes the R1 and R2 zone. So from that policy perspective, rezoning from R1 to R2 is supported. Staff will evaluate further policies to determine if the development is supported in terms of compatibility with adjacent land uses, servicing, transportation, the environment, and overall intent of the municipal planning strategy. So the next step in the process is to set the public participation meeting, and is therefore recommended that council refer this matter to that public participation meeting on January 29th, 6:00 p.m. here in town's council chambers.
Thank you. Questions from members of council? Quite straightforward. No? Someone prepared to make a motion, please? Counselor Fager.
Yes, Your Worship. Make a motion that Town Council refer the matter to staff to undertake a public participation meeting in consideration of rezoning of 12 Kensington Court on January 29th, 2020, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall.
All right, thank you. Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next item there is just an item of correspondence for information from Douglas Corcom and Dwight Henninger. They wrote a letter in support of off-highway vehicles on Centennial Trail. So that's there for your reference. Going down to correspondence for action. We have a request from Tom Kift, Gino Albroome, and Haley Johnson. So there's a couple of things in this, and I'll just kind of explain that to council as I met with these individuals. So these neighbors all have solar, either on their roof now or going to be on their roof soon. But for two of the houses that are side by side, literally identical, one sees a 40% drop in power production in the afternoon because there's some trees on townland blocking the solar production. So the policy that we have is that trees need to be cut down, and they're healthy trees. I understand some of these trees are dead and some are dying, and some of them are healthy. But the policy currently states that it has to be a decision of council to direct staff to be able to cut down those trees. So this has led to a discussion that will be referred. So there's two motions here. The first one will be just to deal with these five trees. The second will be that we need to update our policy because we've gone through Smart Cities Challenge. We have Energized Bridgewater on the books. We want people to transition to green renewable energy, but we have a tree policy that really doesn't even allow for the cutting of one tree if it's blocking the production of solar. And so I think we need to have that discussion and some research done by staff to make sure that we update our policy, but in a way that balances that out. Obviously, you don't want clear cutting to get solar. That defeats the purpose. But I think we need to find a path that, as I said, does balance the two. So the first is to do with the trees. The first motion, just the trees. And in their correspondence, there's other items that we'll be asking to refer staff. Did you have anything to add to that?
No.
That's pretty straightforward. So is someone prepared to put the first motion on the floor? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
The first? I don't see anyone.
And if you want to refresh your, someone else can go ahead. Someone else want to make a motion?
Yeah.
You guys are all eager here, doing your reading.
I hope I have the right one.
If you have two, then you got the right one.
The Town of Bridgewater directs staff to remove up to five trees on town-owned land to allow solar access for renewable energy production for the Kift, Broome, and Johnson properties as per Document 20-005.
Thank you, yes. Seconded by Counselor McGuinness. Questions? Counselor Graves?
So just in regards to removing the trees, can we ask them to replant the number of trees that they've taken down? Isn't reasonable?
In a different location.
Yeah. And if you take down five trees, then you have to put up five trees. That seems like, to me, it seems like a reasonable request. It's in fitting with Energized Bridgewater. It's in fitting with the environment. Trees are carbon sinks.
I mean, we could certainly do that when we work towards a policy. Is that what you're?
Well, I'm just thinking about the type of tree, you know, those types of things that we might want to give some thought to.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Counselor Bell.
So are we directing staff to take down those trees at the town's expense or at the homeowner's expense?
Ideally, it wouldn't be at the town's expense. So we'd make that clear, yeah.
Okay.
So this will just be directing staff to do what they need to do to get that done, including negotiating who pays for that?
Right.
Just related to Counselor Graves' point, and he raises it a couple of times, I think, in the past over the course of the years. I mean, we've had NSCC do tree studies. We've had Dal come in and do tree studies. But I'm not sure we've actually created a policy surrounding where to plant, what we're planting, and so on. I think it's probably time to do that.
So I think that has to be part of our goal of everything. The whole tree policy has to be updated to include provisions for solar, and that should include, in my opinion, if you're going to cut down five trees to do solar, you should be offsetting that by planting five trees, but making sure that they're native species, not going to do further damage. We have seen, in some cases, trees planted and people with the best intentions planting trees that then have caused other issues because they're not the right species. So we should make sure that's noted in.
So does council want that to be a condition of this request in terms of the five trees or for future?
I would say for future. People want to get, we may be waiting long enough.
Yeah, okay.
And that's my opinion.
So that will, if that can be noted in the next, we don't have to put it in the next motion, but as part of what we're sending back to staff for the next motion. Perfect, thank you. Any other questions on the motion that's on the floor? Hearing none. Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Do you think you have a question? No? Okay. Is someone prepared to make a motion for the second part of that? Counselor Fager.
Yes. That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the requests, other than tree removal, received from Tom Kift and contained in Document 20-005 to staff for report and recommendations.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Graves. And then this is definitely a staff item with a property on land, and again, the tree policy. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is municipality of Barrington, application for Department of Education Personal Development Credit for Fire Service. So looking for a credit for students who are volunteering in fire service. I mean, to me, it just sounds like a great idea. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Counselor Thorburn.
Yeah, there's numerous. Fire departments have junior fire departments, and they can go there. Usually, the age is 13 because they can go into the senior department at 19 and take all the training skills and be very active. And it does help with their schoolwork as well. And there's a future of the fire service. So I think having this as a credit is a step in the right direction. I would certainly support it and make the motion if required.
Please do.
I would move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater support the municipality of Barrington's application in the form of a letter to allow schools in Nova Scotia to offer a personal development credit for students that join a fire department and undergo the required training.
Seconded by Counselor McDonald, who is a representative with the Town Council of Fire Service. Any questions on that?
Question.
Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item reports recommendations. We have the building permit report for November 2019. Are there any questions on that? Another busy year in the town. Next item is recommendation of the Director of Finance, 2020, 2021 budget process. I feel like we're just so streamlined now, so efficient with these meetings. How many meetings, when you first joined council? How many meetings did you have for budget?
A lot.
Fifteen?
All, easily. And we're well into June sometimes approving it.
Yeah. I think my first budget was first thing in June. So it doesn't mean we're less thorough. It just means we're more efficient.
I remember on an $18 million budget, we were arguing over $100 write-up.
Yeah. Are there any questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Director of Finance and approve the budget process as contained in Document 20-006, culminating in anticipated final budget discussion and approval on Tuesday, April 14th at the regular council meeting.
Seconded by Counselor Fager. So those, the dates that are being suggested, Monday, March 30th, budget meeting; Monday, April 6th, budget meeting with the budget discussion, final discussion approval on the 14th of April. Just so the public, I know they're writing all this down because they want to make sure that they're here. It's exciting. I love budget season. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Recommendation of Director of Finance, temporary borrowing resolution. We need this regular order of business for council. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Thorburn?
That whereas Section 66 under Municipal Government Act provides that the Town of Bridgewater, subject to approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, may borrow to expend funds for capital purposes authorized by stature. And whereas the Town of Bridgewater has adopted a capital budget for the fiscal year as required by Section 65 of the Municipal Government Act, and are so authorized to expend funds for capital purposes identified in their capital budget. And whereas a specific amount and description of the project are contained in Schedule A, be it therefore resolved that under the authority of Section 66 of the Municipal Government Act, the Town of Bridgewater borrow sum or sums not exceeding $2,245,000 for the purpose set out above, subject to approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. That the sum be borrowed by the issuance and sale of debentures of the town to such an amount as the council deems necessary, and that the issue of debentures be postponed pursuant to Section 92 of the Municipal Government Act, and that the town borrow from time to time a sum or sums not exceeding $2,245,000 in total from any chartered bank or trust company doing business in Nova Scotia. That the sum be borrowed for a specific period not to exceed 12 months from the date of approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing of this resolution. That the interest payable on the borrowing be paid at a rate to be agreed upon, and that the amount be repaid from the proceeds of the debentures when sold.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Fager. Questions?
Question.
Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is application to purchase land, 398 York Street. Did you have to go through that? Do you want to go through that?
Yeah, just quickly. Nick's here too, if council has any questions. But the reports are requesting council make a decision with respects to the execution of an agreement of purchase and sale with South Shore Glass Limited, and it'd be for property on York Street for the purchase price of $33,440. It's .86 acres. And there is performance requirements attached to this parcel as well. And that would ensure that there would be a building 40 feet by 80 feet for warehouse purposes, built within two years of taking possession. So up until that time, there could be some storage on the property, but the intent is that within that two-year period, that would be built. If it's not built, the performance clauses within the agreement enable council to purchase the property back.
Yeah, the buyback agreement, that performance standard is a three-year, 36-month provision. But their intention is to build within two years.
Within two, okay.
Great. Counselor Graves?
If there was a buyback, what would be the price? The price paid?
It stipulates in the agreement, I believe it is. Let me look on there.
So buyback at the original purchase price?
At the price that we purchased, I believe it is, yeah.
Yes, it is. Okay. Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion, please?
I move Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater authorize the execution of the agreement of purchase and sale and buyback agreement with South Shore Glass Limited for the property being 398 York Street for a purchase price of $33,440, and with the agreements to be generally in the form included in Document 19-148A.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Graves. Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And another application to purchase land in ninety-one Winstle Drive. This in itself is a good news story, it's two parcels of land for two businesses that are growing. Yeah, so it's the same.
Same, same deal, it's forty-two thousand, and it is for one point zero seven acres as well, and there are performance clauses on that as well. That would ensure that there ultimately would be a structure contained on the lot.
Questions on that?
Question. Did that go through real estate, these parcels of land, or did it be dealt with directly with the town?
The application came to the town.
Yeah, so it was no real estate fees being paid?
No, we didn't have a broker representative, that, that contract had expired.
Okay.
While in advance of this, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Feel like making another motion?
Yes. I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater authorize the execution of the agreement of purchase and sale and buyback agreement with L and B Electric Limited for the property being ninety-one Winstle Drive for a purchase price of forty-two thousand dollars, and with the agreements to be generally in the form included in Document nineteen, one five eight A.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Graves. Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Next item is recommendation of staff Energize Bridgewater Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. And I see Mr. DeVried is here. Did you want to just give us a brief overview on that?
Creaky. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
I'm getting all of them, not that creak.
Throw me under the bus. So the staff report before you relates to the establishment of an advisory committee for the Energize Bridgewater program. It would be a committee of council, this is staff's recommendation, and this is in order to receive advice and evaluation support for the seemingly ever-growing Energize Bridgewater program, and to ensure that community concerns and needs are addressed on the most foundational level in the project. We recommend that this committee be formed in order to assist with all of that. The town did actually propose as part of its Smart Cities application to create such a structure. There is a chart on page two of your staff report that illustrates what the town proposed to Infrastructure Canada, so this is a, this is also connected to our obligations under that contribution agreement with Infrastructure Canada. And as you can see, the Energize Bridgewater Advisory Committee, a committee of council, is on the right-hand side of that diagram. The primary role for the committee would be to provide feedback and support to the Energize Bridgewater project manager, and also to be able to speak to Town Council and provide recommendations through staff. Some of the related community engagement or consultation structures that would be part of this committee's work would be to set up an ombuds person and a client advisory circle for the program to ensure that client and resident concerns and needs are adequately and fairly addressed by the program. And the remainder of the staff report identifies a couple of the details that you'll find in the attached draft terms of reference, including that the committee, committee's role is to champion and advise the Town of Bridgewater on matters related to energy, sustainability, affordability, and accessibility, to advise, make recommendation, and make recommendations to the town regarding the implementation of the Community Energy Investment Plan and the Energy Poverty Reduction Program. Populating the committee, staff recommends a total of seven to nine voting members, consisting of a representative from Town Council, two Bridgewater residents with a number of characteristics that we would be looking for there, and representatives from the energy sector, transportation sector, housing sector, financial sector, and social services sector, these being stakeholders that have the most at stake with the Energize Bridgewater program. Should council approve the terms of reference, staff will issue an invitation to serve to applicants around the community as well as through our networks, and the notice would be posted on town website and social media channels as well as through a local newspaper.
Great, thank you, questions from council? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the attached terms of reference for the Energize Bridgewater Advisory Committee to support the development and implementation of the Energize Bridgewater program, and direct staff to issue an invitation to serve on the committee.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any questions?
Question.
Hearing none, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Our next item is Lindbergh County Senior Safety Program December Report, and we go through these every month, and it's always very eye-opening. One that really caught me was, so this is, remember, this is the December report. We have helped three clients find new homes just in time for the holidays. So just, you can't really put a price on something like that. So it's just, the service is so valuable, and it's just important that people are aware of that. So that's there for your approval. Next item is recommendation of Director Finance additional twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one capital preapproval. So there's a few items in that list. Director of Finance, Mrs. Kaiser?
So on December ninth, the council passed a motion to preapprove a number of capital projects for the twenty twenty-one capital budget to enable tenders to get out and work to get started on a timely basis in the new year. Since that time, there's been one additional project come forward, which is the wastewater treatment plant digester roof, which is, as you can see from the description in the report, is in pretty hard shape, and the work that needed to be completed before the roof could be replaced is now complete. So they would like to get started on getting tenders out so that they can get the roof repaired.
Questions about that? Anyone prepared to make a motion, Counselor Frazier?
Yes, Your Worship, that Town, that Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of the Director of Finance and preapproved the twenty, twenty twenty twenty-one capital budget for the project outlined in Document twenty dash zero one three in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seconded by Counselor Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. It's not easy to say twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, is it? Because you want to say twenty twenty-one. It just sounds like you're missing a whole year. It's going to take you a whole year to get used to that. Next item is award of RFP twenty nineteen dash fifteen Renewable Energy Resource Study. Mr. DeVried?
So this, this staff report contains the outcomes of RFP twenty nineteen fifteen, which was released as part of the Energize Bridgewater program. The staff report was written by Miles Cornish, our Onside Energy Manager, but I'm here in his stead tonight. So this, this RFP relates to the idea that the Town of Bridgewater still doesn't have a very good sense of exactly where in the community are the best locations for renewable energy installations. With the award of the Smart Cities grant, we had additional resources to be able to put into that assessment process, and this RFP essentially fulfills much of what we would have had to cobble together by staff time and talking to a lot of different, you know, stakeholders in the community and so on, and now we can farm the work out to a consultant and get it done professionally and, and quickly. So the, the, the work involves assessing specific parcels of land in and around Bridgewater that have potential for that development so that that can then be built into a long-term renewable energy plan for the community that complements the Community Energy Investment Plan. It also fulfills one of the requirements of the Smart Cities program, which is to explore the development of an actual renewable energy installation within this five-year window, and the project that has been drafted for that has been a solar farm for Bridgewater, but without this study, we don't know exactly what the best location for it is and so on. So staff issued fifty-six RFP packages, of which we receive, for which we received five qualifying bids. The scoring for the bids is, for the winning bid, I should say, is presented here. And based on that review, staff recommends that council award the contract for this work to SNC Lavalin Inc. for a proposal price of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen, seven hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents, plus HST or one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, forty-nine, sorry, one hundred and thirty thousand, forty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents, including net of municipal HST.
Okay. Any questions from members of council, Counselor Graves?
So I guess in return to renewable energy is just for solar, it doesn't include wind or water power?
So this study, one of the things we were able to build on through the grant funding from Infrastructure Canada is that the, the, the study will explore all wind, solar, biomass, hydro, as well as energy storage options within the community. So it's a broad, a real broad look at renewable energy opportunities throughout the community.
Sounds exciting, good, thank you.
Other questions?
Sorry, question, is SNC Lavalin Health and Office in Halifax?
Yes. Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Graves?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the staff request to award RFP two thousand nineteen dash fifteen Renewable Energy Resource Study to SNC Lavalin Inc. for the proposed price of one twenty-four, seven oh four, eighty-four cents, plus HST, one hundred and thirty thousand, forty-nine, one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and thirty thousand, forty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents in net, net HST.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question.
Hearing none, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Our next item is recommendation Director Finance additional twenty nineteen, twenty capital approval. So we have something that we desperately need, we need to replace a pump.
Yes.
Because it's messy when it's not replaced, when it fails. Did you want to give us some detail on that?
Sure. Not too much detail. This is a request to actually add to this year's capital budget, a project for twenty-five thousand dollars. On the twenty-second of December, the, the plunger pumps at the wastewater treatment plant failed and, and filled the basement with sludge. They brought in a vacuum truck, and that solace has been cleared up, but staff aren't confident that the, these are thirty-year-old pumps and that they're, they're not going to last without significant expense to keep them running. So the draft twenty twenty-one cap, capital budget included a four-year pump replacement program for a wastewater treatment plant and pumping station pumps. So this would pull this ahead by a year so that we could take a year off the end.
Other questions from members of council, Counselor Graves?
So how many pumps are there, do you know, Don?
I do not.
I guess the other question would be, shouldn't they just not be done if they're thirty years old and they're?
Should they all be done?
Just get them done?
I don't know if they're all thirty years old.
No, I, I think that, that this one is the one that they're most concerned with.
Yeah, they did have a schedule for replacement in the capital plan.
And this has just kind of pulled it ahead.
Yeah.
Other questions from members of council? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move the Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve a twenty nineteen, twenty capital budget for the project outlined in twenty dash zero one five in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Seconded by Counselor McGinnis, further discussion?
Question.
Hearing none, questions being called? All those in favor, you guys are voting early, all those opposed. They're excited. Next item is, we have vacant position on the board of the Western Regional Housing Authority, and so there's a letter from the province asking that we fill that, and I believe we have tried a couple of times to fill that. It is, it is to be filled by a citizen. So I guess this is our plea to the public that if they have an interest in volunteering, and want to volunteer on the Western Regional Housing Authority Board, I'm assuming the applications will be available online. They may be available online, thank you. You can contact any one of us on council, and we'll direct you to where those are. So hopefully there's somebody watching live streaming and interested in helping out. Thank you.
Can we do a Facebook post in regards to the importance of housing and, and the importance of housing and having a representative from the Town of Bridgewater?
Yeah, so we can, we could certainly do that and maybe include what's required of them if they wanted to be on that board, so. I see Mr. Hurdle giving us a thumbs up, so we can make sure that happens, thank you. We already dealt with the lease agreement for Small Worlds, so next we're going down to New Business Public Service Commission Temporary Borrowing Resolution Guarantee. Again, this is normal procedure. Counselor Thorburn, prepared to make a motion, please?
Sure, Your Worship. Whereas the Public Service Commission of Bridgewater is a body corporate pursuant to provisions of Chapter fifty-nine of the Statutes of Nova Scotia nineteen ninety-three, and whereas the commission has resolved to borrow by the issue and sale of debentures the sum of one million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the purpose of water systems, and whereas pursuant to Section forty, subsection four of the Municipal Government Act, the commission has requested the Town of Bridgewater guarantee the principal interests of said borrowing. And whereas Section eighty-eight of the Municipal Government Act provides that no guarantee of a borrowing by a municipality shall have effect unless the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing has approved of the proposed borrowing or debenture and of the proposed guarantee. Be it therefore resolved that, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Town of Bridgewater unconditionally guarantee repayment of the principal interest of the borrowing of one hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and ninety, one million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the purpose set up above, and that upon the issue of the temporary borrowing resolution, the mayor and clerk of the town do sign the guarantee attached to the temporary borrowing resolution of the Public Service Commission of Bridgewater and affix heretofore the corporate seal of the town, and are authorized to do all things and execute all documents necessary to give effect to this resolution.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Frazier. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Next item is Region Six Solid Waste Resource Management Budget Approval for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Small increase, I think, over last year.
Well, actually, it's a small decrease over what actually happened, of four thousand dollars.
Well, that's good. I did have a question, intermunicipal program. Like, what is intermunicipal program?
There's notes here.
Just because I do know that's highlighted in.
That's the, the note there indicates that was, they engaged Recollect to build an electronic sorting app. The cost of the app was nine thousand, and they passed a motion to pay for the app at nine thousand in twenty nineteen twenty. And there was also cost of promo pens. And this amount is slated here in intermunicipal program that will be in operations going forward. So it sounds like it's, it's programs that are to the benefit of all the municipalities.
It should be noted that the province is looking at reducing the number of regions in the province, which would be a good.
I think that is a good thing, it seems to be.
Yeah.
How many are there in total, are there?
Seven.
Seven or eight?
Six for sure, and I thought it was.
I hope there's six for sure, because this is Region Six. There's five we're paying for those.
I think there's seven.
Yeah.
Would you like a motion for the budget?
I, yes, please.
I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of Region Six Intermunicipal Committee and approve the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one Region Six budget in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars as presented in Document twenty dash zero zero four.
Seconded by Counselor Frazier, any discussion?
Just a comment in regards to the app, the recycle those, that's a handy little tool.
It's a very good tool.
If people don't have that on their smartphones, that's, it's something they should easily download and use. I forgot all about the Saturday garbage pickup, and there it came, came the reminder, and out I went. So it was great.
And it is being, what, used?
What's that?
It is being used a lot.
Good, and it should be used more, I guess.
Two people, personally, just started laughing at me because. Two people, personally, just started laughing at me because I did not have the app.
And it was evident.
Yeah. So I do now have the app. Something else. Thank you. We had moved it again. I don't think we've tweeted about all that yet.
I don't think we have.
Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Get the app. All right. Our next item is a notice, proposed changes to policy 51, inserts in billings. Had some, well, from time to time, we get requests to put inserts in some of our water bill or something else, but some of these can be very, very time-consuming for staff because they have to fold them manually, and in some cases potentially result in overtime being charged to the town. So this should alleviate some of that.
Yeah, so it's just specifying the type of paper and size that is acceptable for our folding machine and stuffer, yeah.
Someone prepared to make that motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the municipal government act that at the January 27, 2020 council meeting, changes to policy 51, inserts in billings will be considered to clarify requirements and specifications of inserts.
Seconded by councillor Thorburn. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is request for sponsorship for South Shore Lobster Crawl 2020. It's a request for $1,000. This, councillor Bell?
Would you like a motion?
Sure.
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and allocate $1,000 from the 2019-2020 economic development budget to support the request for sponsorship from the 2020 South Shore Lobster Crawl event.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Fergier. Discussion? Councillor Graves, sorry?
I have to say, I'm not really for this. Lobster industry on the South Shore is about $400 million. There's shippers, there's restaurants that benefit, there's the fishers, the transport companies, there's a whole bunch of people that benefit from that. And for this organization to come to the town, to the government agencies, to support something that not even some of the restaurants are supporting, I just have a problem with that. So, excuse me, $1,000 is not a lot of money, it's the risk.
Thank you. Councillor McGuinness?
I also will not be supporting the motion for similar reasons, but I proposed to what had to be six, seven years ago, a room levy, that everyone's aware of, and if these people would have got on board at that time, we would have an abundance of money. And so...